I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone to the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education Meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, 2019. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, it's nice to see a full house tonight. That's fantastic. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Deeds.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Is the audio working fine?
TV is.
You gotta kill the TV. Yeah. The volume's still up like it was at FNF.
Yeah. Could we turn this TV off, please? We're getting feedback here.
Volume's up.
Or turn it down? Just turn the volume down on this one? We don't like to hear ourselves talk twice. It's hard. Okay. Is that off now? Is it off now? Still on?
Yeah. Yeah, it's still on.
Let's turn the TV off then. Let's just turn that set off.
I think it went in the room.
Josiah? Turned set off.
Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, that sounds better to us? Does that sound better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, good. Sue, also, will you please verify that we've been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Starting off our evening tonight, there's a couple of things that the superintendent would like to share with us.
I'm taking over the inspirational moment, and we have some very inspirational students with us tonight. They are semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And if you would stand when I call your name, Alex Kempin from South. Brady Chila from West. Matthew Langer from West also. And we also have another one for me achieved, Danielle Hewitt, but I don't believe she was able to make it tonight. She's actually started college early. So congratulations to all these students. It's a lot of hard work.
Do a virtual clap for her? Is that a virtual clap?
But congratulations to all these students and good luck as finalists. When does that roll around? When does that... Do you know when they name the finalists? December? Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll be hearing from you in December then. So thank you for coming tonight, and again, good luck with that program.
That is inspirational, yes.
Our other piece of inspiration is you have baskets at your desk. At least, most of you do. Oh, you said... Okay. I didn't want to make sure we didn't miss anybody.
Amanda ate everything.
This is National School Board Week, and so we try to reflect on the other National Teachers Week and so on. So this is our way for the administration here to say thank you to the board for all the work you do and countless hours of meetings every week, every month. And that adds up to quite a few in a year. So we'd like to say thank you for your support and your work. And sometimes, it's probably thankless work, but it is important. And I think we can't, as an administration, we can't operate without the work you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. That was nice.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to bright lights. Faith Linsicum? Did I pronounce your name?
You got it right. Faith Linsicum, yes. Principal at Hillcrest.
Every once in a while, I get lucky. Thank you, Faith.
You did good. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all tonight. We are excited to share some information on some practices that we're using in a collaboration between special education and regular education staff. So they are going to... I'm gonna get out of their way, and they're gonna just briefly talk a little bit about a practice that the team was able to present at Summer Institute as well to other teachers in the district on co-teaching.
I'm Andrew Weber. I'm a special ed teacher, grades two to five. I'm also a special ed teacher. My name is Sue Little.
I'm Carolyn Schreiber. I teach fifth grade literacy at Hillcrest.
And I'm Karen Byrne. I teach third grade math and science and social studies at Hillcrest.
So we'd just like to share a few things of what we've been doing. Carolyn and I have been team teaching with fifth graders. This is our third year. So every year gets a little bit better and a little bit stronger as we learn about each other and our kiddos every year. So co-teaching for us is general education teachers partnering with special education, speech and language therapists, ELL teachers, and other specialists to provide instruction to meet the needs of all learners.
And I think one thing that we really want to touch on is that this is intentional. The planning is intentional. So it's not like we're just popping into a classroom to support. We actually are planning our lessons together, differentiating just to meet the needs of all of our learners and really providing that inclusive environment. All right. So some of the models that we use for co-teaching, there's six of them, but we have kind of perfected these. Parallel teaching is when two teachers are teaching the same lesson, but they're just teaching it to different groups concurrently at the same time. So that helps us be able to differentiate our teaching and allow students access to all of the content. Then another... Yep. And then we have teaming, which Carolyn and Sue can talk about here a little bit. This is their Reader's Workshop.
Right. We both teach together, so we'll take turns leading each parts of the lesson.
And then here, this is myself and a fifth grade math teacher, and this was one of the teaching models that we use, have been using quite frequently. So he's teaching the main lesson right now, and you can see I'm kind of collecting data for PLCs and just looking at observations, observing the kids, and also helping with behaviors as needed throughout the classroom to keep the kids all on track. So is there one more, too?
Station teaching.
Yep.
Yeah, I wanna talk about that. Right. So station teaching is great because I can be working with a guided group at the back table, and Andrea can be working with another small group at a different location while other kids are doing what they need to do around the room during application time during math. And so we can meet lots of different needs in that way.
Yep. So there's some building-wide systems planning as well that goes into this. Every year, we take a look at all of our learners and where are their IEP goals and where are they for their homerooms and for their instruction to make sure we're making the most use of their time, making sure it's impactful. They're only in classrooms where students have IEP goals related to the instruction. So whether that's reading, math, or social emotional learning and providing those opportunities for all learners, that's where the supports come in. Our building schedule has to support it. We have to make sure that the different subjects are completely overlapping across the whole building. We've also got some opportunities for intervention blocks built into the schedule as well because that's where the IEP goals are also met. In addition to some time in the classroom for the co-teaching, there's also opportunities for learners with their specific intervention instruction. And I think the testament to this, too, is kind of the health and happiness of the teacher as well, knowing that we have two minds on our learners and we have the thinking of two really highly qualified instructors as part of the strength of our model. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions we might have? Yes, Bill? We can't let you guys get away just with the presentation.
I have to come up with a quick question now. But seriously, this is different, right? Normally, we'd be doing the way you're teaching it. Can you give us like a result or something that's come out of it that looks very positive? Again, get close to the microphone so it can be heard on the air.
We have definitely noticed an improvement with social emotional learning in that the kids are not only working together as a community and, you know, building those relationships, but they're also helping each other out with the problems and doing problem-solving among themselves because social emotional learning is built into our day.
Carolyn and I have seen... Sorry. Carolyn and I have seen a growth in reading. So I service most of the students in three through five that have literacy goals. So I was trained in the Sunday Reading Program. So I meet those needs through their IEP during an intervention time, but then we're able to meet those needs and let those kids be part of the whole group. So they're with their peers for literature discussion groups and that. And we also tied it to our teacher effectiveness for our SLO last year. So we were tracking some of the kiddos and watching their growth throughout the year, and we had good success according to their...
We increased achievement in running records for the students that we served.
Thank you. That's kind of stuff I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just real quick, how long have we been co-teaching? And maybe it's kind of evolved over time? And have we used all the different various methods all at once or just kind of added on? Or how did that work?
A lot of us attended the I Summit Inclusion Conference a few... three years ago. And after that, we were really inspired to give this a try. So we started three years ago, and it's been going strong since.
Well, Andrea and I, this is our first main year doing it, so...
Grade levels are all at different places. So it depends on where everyone is as far as their comfort level and that, too. So we happen to be one of the first ones that went to the I Summit three years ago, and we just fell in love with what people were talking about and what we learned there. So we just kind of went all in, so...
So are you like mentors to others in the district that are wanting to start up, too?
Not sure in the district. But our building... And we presented at Summer Institute this year.
So we did try to do that and share what we've learned and successes we've had, maybe roadblocks we've come in to as well. So but we've been trying to share it every year. Like, we started in fifth grade, and then we added third grade this year, and we've also tried to add fourth grade as well. So we kind of add a little bit. So there is only two of us, and it's kind of hard, so...
We do have a K-1 special education teacher as well who teams predominantly with first grade and 4K this year. A little heavier on the social emotional learning as opposed to the reading and math, but that's where the team teaching takes place.
All right. Anybody else? Greg?
Just want to shout out to both Faith and also Director of Special Ed, I would believe it would be Karen, without the support behind the scenes.
Is your mic on, Greg?
That wouldn't be happening. So congratulations to the team of teachers, but also from the support from not only the principal, but Director of Special Ed. Thank you.
Diane?
And I just want to say thank you for doing this for the kids because it takes a lot of extra effort to work together, to, you know, to have two people working together for the betterment of their education, and we appreciate that you're doing that for them.
Sounds like you have some momentum, too. Definitely some good teamwork going on. So thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our recognitions. Mr. Cook, you have some people to recognize tonight. I have the names. I'm just gonna let you share the excitement.
The Employee Recognition Award for October 2019 is being presented this evening to Heidi Edwards. Heidi started in the school district in 2010. Her nominators begin by saying that before getting her degree as a school counselor, she worked in our district as an instructional aide. Her strengths related to helping students feel accepted and confident, they were extremely noteworthy. She is a student-centered counselor. And she's now in her third year with us as a school counselor. She serves seven elementary schools in the district, visiting every classroom once a month. She's optimistic, organized, and compassionate, and she greatly impacts students as she promotes empathy development and other pro-social skills. She has been instrumental in training teachers and staff on social and emotional learning and has worked to create many resources for parents and teachers to utilize to help build positive and nurturing environments that are conducive to learning and growth. It was last week she presented and did some staff development with our administration as well. As a result of the monthly lessons and teacher support offered this year and last, students across the district have shown growth in positive decision-making, empathy development, and self-regulation. Heidi has played a key role in getting the Second Step Social and Emotional Learning Curriculum up and running in all elementary schools, grade 4K through 5. From bully prevention and personal safety to calming strategies and friendship skills, there's no end of the wealth of information Heidi shares with our students and families. She is quick to respond and remains calm even in stressful situations. Her commitment to the students and staff she works with is unmatched by many. She is truly an asset to our district. So Heidi, on behalf of the school district, I'd like to congratulate you on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition.
Awesome. Wow. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I don't, but I'm surprised in year three how many I'm remembering. Appreciate this honor recognition. Sure. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for supporting the social emotional learning and the work that myself and Amanda DeSua, the other school counselor, do at our elementary school. I just feel so blessed to be able to serve kids and staff within these buildings to help move forward these really valuable skills. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I like how we start off our meetings. We have our student representatives coming back to give us reports now. We missed you guys over the summer. Tonight, we have our representatives from Waukesha North. Why don't you please come forward and introduce yourselves, and we'll get to see you a couple times this... two or three times this year.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight.
Or you can have the principal introduce you.
Do whatever she does.
Tonight, I am privileged to bring with me Haley Blagden and Danielle Rana. They're both 12th graders at Waukesha North High School. They are very active in a variety of activities, athletic events, and are achieving well academically. So they're going to share some of the great things going on at North with you tonight as soon as I get us up and rolling.
Airplay. There. Nice conversation. All right. Yeah. So as Mrs. Higgins said, I'm Haley Blagden.
And I'm Danielle Rana.
And we get to share with you some of the good stuff that's going on at North in athletics and activities.
So first, we'll start off with boys soccer. One of our better starts of the season, we beat number-two-ranked Arrowhead in the state, which was a big deal for us personally. Then we've already surpassed our win total for last season, which was five. We didn't really have that great of a season last year. And then we've got four all-conference returnees, so that's great. And then we already have two college commits on our soccer team, so...
Were you on that team?
Yeah.
I could tell by the smile.
So next is girls and boys cross-country. So this past meet, we had what we call our VIP meet. And so all that means is that each of us runners got to ask a teacher from school to come and support us at the meet, and they just came and watched us and cheered us on. And it was really cool for us to see our teachers and people that do things for us in school to come and support us outside of school. Our conference meet is coming up. That's a big deal, and it's really exciting to see how everyone's gonna do. And there's also a possibility for one of our freshmen to go to state this year, which would be really exciting to see. On the boys' side of things, varsity has, as a team, has won two meets, and they're also, as a team, predicted to go to state. So that's gonna be exciting to see.
For football, we got off to a rough start. We're three and four right now, though. We play O-Con tomorrow, so we're looking for a bounce-back win. And then CMH after that. And I'm sure you guys know, but we have one Madison football player that's with us, and then we'll graduate that semester. And he just... He's excelling right now, so we're hoping to keep that up on Friday.
Next is girls and boys volleyball. So on the girls' side, they took third at the home tournament, and they have two conference games left, and their senior night is later this week, so they get to celebrate all the hard work that the seniors have put in. And then on the boys' side, they had their first conference win against KM in a really long time, and that is really awesome to see that improvement in their program. And there's also a lot more boys that are joining the program, which is part of the reason why it's getting better. And they also took second in their pool at a tournament recently.
So for cheer, last year, we came eighth in the state finals, which is a very... like a huge improvement from other years in the past. And this recent camp for them, they came first for their new routines that they just implemented. And then they're also looking forward to making a big placing at state again.
Girls' tennis. We have a player on the tennis team who won all-conference honorable mention, and they had subsectionals yesterday, which unfortunately, no one is advancing any farther in the state tournament, but that was something that was going on. Girls' swim and dive. So recently, they had their Swimapalooza meet. I was like, what is that? And I heard about this. It's actually a 24-hour meet that go... relay meet that was held at North, and they collected canned goods, as you can kind of see in this top picture up there. They collected canned goods and donated that to Food Pantry. And then two school records were also broken for them recently. And then they had their senior night, and they all got a water bottle and some flowers to remember the season.
So girls' golf, it kind of just ended their season, but they placed fourth overall in conference, which was really good for them. And one golfer did go to sectionals, I think it was last weekend. But and then for team bonding, they stayed overnight in Lake Geneva and just had a blast for a weekend. So I wish I could do that.
Marching band, this year, their theme is metamorphosis, and they've performed for us a couple of times at halftime at football games, and it looks really good so far this year. Obviously, they have state coming up, and we're hoping for another win, fingers crossed. So but we'll see how that goes. And then choir. Choir is just kind of picking up speed in what they're doing. So they're working on their upcoming fall performance, and they're also raising money by selling yummy sorushi's chocolate bars around school to take their trip to New York.
For dance, they traveled to Michigan last spring, and they won a national championship in Minnesota. So that was a really big deal for them. They were really excited. They came back to school, and everybody clapped them up. It was a big deal. And then like a few... Like last month, they had... They hosted a Dance Days where a bunch of younger girls come to dance, and then all the dance teams throughout Waukesha come to North, and then they all perform a bunch of routines, and that was pretty cool. And then they also fundraised to go to Florida in spring for another nationals. So they're hoping to bring that title home again. And then so Drama Club, we're getting ready for our fall show. It's called Clue on Stage. They've been hosting a lot of Culver fundraisers to get those props ready for the show. So I'm excited to go see it. It's usually a really good show.
Key Club, again, another one that's kind of just picking up speed. We've only had a couple of meetings so far, but one thing that I think is really cool with Key Club is that there are almost 100 members in Key Club this year. So it's not only the biggest club in the school, but it's the biggest Key Club has ever been in history of Key Club at North. But so yeah, that's... I mean, we came to the library the first day, and there were so many people. It was really cool. But also, we have our upcoming yearly trick-or-treat for canned goods. So instead of trick-or-treating for candy on Halloween, we all go out and trick-or-treat for canned goods in the surrounding neighborhoods and then donate what we collect to Food Pantry. And then something else we're doing this year, this picture isn't very good on the right, but we're all making happy birthday locker signs for everyone. And then so whenever it's your birthday, the locker sign goes up on your... the birthday sign goes up on your locker, so...
All handmade.
Yeah. Yeah, they are handmade. Girl Talk. So one of the things that Girl Talk did at the very beginning of the year was they put a feminine product station in all of the girls' bathrooms around the school. And so what this does is it gives girls that can't necessarily afford the stuff they need for their periods access to this stuff, which is really important. And it actually wasn't something that I had ever thought about before this because I've never been in that situation, but it really just opened my eyes, and what they're doing is really cool that they're giving access to everyone. And they also sell smoothies every Friday morning to help raise money for the two $500 scholarships that they give to North seniors.
So Student Council right now, or they just finished up the planning for the Homecoming and Spirit Week. So they oversaw all the preparations for that. They made sure it ran smooth. They picked the themes for the hallways. And yeah, just make sure we had a great time at the pep rally, which we did.
It's a nice picture of you. I didn't realize you were in that one.
Picture of me, I had to get in that. So yearbook, we're all paying for our yearbooks right now. And so right now, they're just collecting senior pictures and quotes. So those are due by next Friday. And then so our yearbook has been in the Gallery of Excellence for the past five years, which is something that we're very proud of at North. And then Elise Steingruber, she takes pictures for the football team and a lot of the cheer pictures, dance pictures, and all sorts of stuff.
She took that last picture, Danielle.
She took that picture. And then she was an honorable mention for the Walsworth Photo Contest, so that was a big deal for her. She was very excited, I know. The second she heard that, she told me about it. It was really cool for her.
Ecology Club. So this year, they want to focus on cleaning... on garden cleanup. So out back around North, we have those gardens, and they want to focus on kind of revamping them and getting them all cleaned out so that when spring comes around, we're ready to go to do stuff with them. And they also want to raise awareness about recycling. So they want to focus mostly on having people not put trash in the recycling because I guess that happens a lot. I didn't really know that until, again, I talked to someone from Ecology Club. But that's one of their main goals. And then they also want to work with a partner in the community, like a business, just to figure out more opportunities for them to volunteer.
So Avid, I'm also... I'm currently in Avid right now. I'm in the senior class. So now we have them in ninth through 12th grade, so that is really cool. I was just in the freshman Avid class, and wow, it's a work in progress right now because it's... We were on tutorials, and it was our second tutorial, and I was trying to help them through it. It's gonna take a little bit, but it's just...
The freshman makes the time.
Yeah, it's cool. It's cool to see the growth from where they are right now to where I am right now. It's really cool. But something that we also do is we partner with Lowell. So we walk over to Lowell, and then we've been with the same class for the past two years, and we just... We sit with them and read with them, and they're starting to read to us, which is a very big improvement to where they were two years ago. They're starting to write better. They're starting to read better. So it's just really cool to see that, too, and like see the impact that we have on them. And then so yeah, this is our first graduating class of Avid in the spring, so it'll be cool. And then so we just finished up our Homecoming. The theme was around the world, so we decorated our hallways, and our Homecoming night was around the world. And then Fox Six came to the school to look at all the hallways, and then they even came out to the Homecoming game, took some cool shots there, let us cheer on the... on TV. And then yeah, we just decorated all the hallways. It was pretty cool.
Yeah, that was fun. Cheering on TV was kind of cool.
Messed it up a few times, but...
So then to wrap us up, I thought that we would talk a little bit about Kai and what the Kai Lohmer Foundation is doing in response to Kai's death. So one of their main focuses is that they want to spread awareness on heart diseases and conditions. So they want to have the entire school EKG tested. So an EKG test just... it's... it can read whether or not you have heart problems. And so already, 100 students are signed up to take the test in April. And again, April is a long ways away, so the fact that already 100 kids are signed up and it hasn't been... What's the word?
Not even close to...
Yeah, it's not even close to the time, but nobody's like spread the news that this is even happening yet. So 100 students is pretty good for right now. And then in Coin Wars, last year... last year, last week, the Coin Wars was hosted, and all the money that was raised is going to the Kai Lohmer Foundation so they can keep doing what they're doing.[1755.11] And I'm hopeful that some of that money is going to go to buying defibrillators, like the one in the picture down there.
Yeah, and for the EKG testing, like some parents have stepped forward or in the shadows rather, rather, and they want to sponsor people that aren't able to pay the $20 for the testing. So I know those closest to Kai, those parents are stepping up in a big way and they really want to get all these kids EKG tested. So this tragedy never happens to anybody ever again in our school district.
What, yeah, what's also is really cool is that they're offering it for $20. If you, if we didn't have this opportunity, an EKG test at your doctor would cost upwards of $1,500, which for almost everyone is not doable. So it, yeah, $20 is a fraction of the cost. Yeah. So that's all we have to share with you guys. That's what's going on around North right now.
Excellent. Questions do we have? Yes, Cory.
I'll admit to being extremely biased. I'm a Waukesha North grad, 95, so a long time ago. I remember being a senior and I do not remember speaking that well. So congratulations, you did a great job. Second of all, I thought we were doing well as students back then. You guys blew us out of the water. So the leadership at the school, Principal Higgins and mostly the students. So great job. Keep up the good work. You should be very proud.
Thank you.
Diane?
You mentioned the, the coin wars 2453. And who won the spirit bell now it is?
Seniors, for sure, for sure. Very proud of that. Two years in a row.
Oh, yeah.
I was surprised you didn't mention it.
Can't be too cocky.
Didn't want to brag too much.
Yeah, it was also very close.
Yeah, a little too close for comfort, but we got it done.
Karen?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention for your recycling students and their, and their club, at the Waukesha County Fair, all the waste from the animals is put into one place and people will walk by and throw their garbage in there. But it would cost a lot of money to have that actually taken away, but farmers come and they will take that and not charge us to take that to their fields. But if there's garbage in it, they said they're not doing it all anymore and we will have a big fee. So if they want to talk to the livestock committee, figure out some way to make sure that people are not just being like, okay, you know, that's obviously garbage, I'm throwing my garbage in there. It's really not. It's actually, yeah, it is usable unless you put your garbage in there. So.
That's a good idea. I was going to say.
This is the last, they were, they were like, if it happens again, we're done. So if they can think of some way.
Yeah, we'll let them know. That's, thank you.
The livestock.
Yeah, the livestock committee at the Waukesha County Fair.
Yeah, we'll let them know for sure.
Anybody else? Well, you guys sure brought North spirit tonight. The energy was great and truly appreciate your report and we'll see you three months from now, I guess.
Yeah, for sure.
Good luck with things. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to a time where we listen to our citizens address the, the board. And as in past practice, we allow up to three minutes for a speaker to address us. At the two and a half minute mark, Amanda will give you a warning, just to try and wrap up in the next 30 seconds or so. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering applause, or other behavior that might detract from the meeting. Also at this time, if you would please silence your phones, we would appreciate that. We do have a few people signed up tonight. Lindsay Fleck? Yeah, if you could just come up to the podium here and.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
My name is Lindsay Fleck. I am here as a parent of two students in the school district of Waukesha, a kindergarten teacher at Hawthorne Elementary School and an education association of Waukesha member. As many of you know, the past year has brought many challenges to the district as enrollment has declined and the school where I formerly taught, Blair Elementary, had to close. Change always brings discomfort and unrest. How we respond to that change, however, can grow or shrink us as people and professionals. I would like to express my gratitude to several members of district administration who have chosen to respond to the changes and challenges we are facing with support for teachers. During the mad scramble to get Hawthorne ready for open house, many of us at the school were panicking, thinking we would never be able to get our building and our classrooms ready for students and families in time. Several members of district administration, including Dimitri Beekman, Melissa Yao, and her family, and Sharon Thede were president and were present in the final teacher workdays to move materials, support teachers setting up classrooms, and just basically do what needed to be done in order to get the school ready. This was not their job and they could have easily made judgments and blamed teachers for not spending enough time at school before open house to get the classrooms and buildings ready. Instead, they chose to take their time to lend a hand and help us out. In another example, we at Hawthorne have been experiencing some challenging behaviors that are at times exacerbated by large class sizes. During this time, Karen Peterson has taken a great deal of time to come to our school to observe, plan, problem solve, train and support implementation of behavior response plans designed to improve not only the behavior of specific students, but helped affect school-wide behavior change for the better. Her input and teaming has resulted in positive short-term changes for teachers and students. And there are many indicators that these changes will continue that trend of positivity. In addition, Tahare Deleon, my principal, has been working tirelessly, tirelessly to provide support, training and resources to teachers and students during this difficult time of transition. Thinking about how I feel at times and how overwhelmed I am, can't even imagine how must she, how must she be feeling. You would never know it though, with her positivity, her energy and her enthusiasm. In education today, we are facing some very tough times. Times like these can make systems and teams stronger if they are channeled properly. I am grateful for the administrators who have chosen to support rather than judge or condemn teachers during these times, and I felt that they deserve some recognition. Thank you.
Julie Jordan? Is it Jordan your last name?
Yeah.
Hey.
Hi, I'm an elementary teacher in the school district of Waukesha. I'm here to voice my concerns about the ongoing discussions regarding our decreasing forward test scores. I'm a teacher. I'm the driver of the car that takes students on the path towards learning. I'm the one who decides where to steer and what is the best path to take to make sure all students reach the final destination. I'm the one who makes sure students stay safe within the car and that we are not lost. It is my responsibility if my passengers do not reach their destination. Unfortunately, I'm also the one to blame if the roadway of learning we are taking is under maintenance. There is a road closer. If the construction causes traffic delays, the car suffers from engine trouble or the passengers become ill. In these events, the drivers then asked what happened to make reaching the learning destination unattainable. The driver receives inquiries on what driving techniques they were using, instructional practices, maps or navigation curriculum, and when the car was last serviced, resources. What the driver is not asked, however, is if the roads were intact, if the tires are in good shape, or if the route specified was even up to date. During the five years I've been in this district, I've watched the budget constantly diminish as eight hours are cut, curriculum coordinators are cut, and effectiveness coaches find themselves losing efficiency because they are split between three or four schools. Now picture the passengers, our students. As anyone who has gone on a road trip with small students can attest, the trip tends to go smoother as long as the passengers are sitting in their seats and well-rested. However, that can seldom be the case. Oftentimes, we are dealing with circumstances for more intense than a simple nap or an irritating sibling. No, in our case, our passengers are experiencing trauma, hunger, and they do not get enough sleep. Simply put, these children need more support than one individual can give them. There's no way around this fact. Currently, we have one or two amazing counselors shared between seven different buildings. With the shortfalls, this means that many of the emotional support needs for these children also fall to classroom teachers, who, if we remember our car metaphor, are already trying to drive, navigate to a destination on an ever-changing route, and keeping tabs on a vehicle that may or may not be in need of servicing. We also have numerous adults in our building whose job does not involve directly working with students. Currently, our ESL teacher's job description is 80% coaching and 20% working with students. We also have effectiveness coaches who have to split their time before, between multiple buildings and are not able to work with students. I will leave you with these thoughts. It does not take, it does indeed take a whole village to raise a child. And unfortunately, that is true even if half the village is delayed due to road construction or traffic. This means the extra work falls on the classroom teachers to pick up the slack and we cannot continue to shoulder this task alone. We need more support rather than blame our additional workload. The changes you make as a board directly affect us and the students in our care. We may drive the car, but it's you who makes sure it is in proper working order. Thank you for your time.
Ellie McHenry?
I'm also addressing the test scores. Every spring, students across the state are given the forward test. And every year, those test results are analyzed and agonized over. If the test results are not good, the search for a solution begins. Usually it begins at the instructional level. We add more rigor or we add more instructional time, or we put in place a regimented instructional model. But those are all quick fixes that make us feel like we are doing something without knowing if it will be effective. Maybe it's time to look at the big picture. Adding rigor and structure has turned our elementary classrooms into something vaguely resembling a mini boot camp. Recession is limited. For upper elementary students, they only get a lunch recess. Teaching is scheduled and timed, but children don't have a schedule. Sometimes they want to do reading in the morning and math in the afternoon. And then maybe the next day they want to flip that around. Sometimes they actually need to play and draw. We need to implement developmentally appropriate classroom practices and curriculum. Right now, there is no set curriculum for reading and writing in the district. We use a reading and writing workshop model that provides a framework or standards, but no actual curriculum. It is up to every teacher to find resources and material for every lesson. This means there is no consistency in reading and writing instruction across the district. Imagine how this might impact the middle school literacy program and teachers. And then there is the testing. When I was a kid, we took the Iowa basic tests, but only every couple of years. Today, it is the forward test and they take it every year. But that's not the only test they take. They also take maps tests several times a year. And if they are in elementary, there's also the running records. That is a lot of testing. At what point are we testing too much? How many times can we get the kids to do their best because it matters? To who? For what is probably what they are thinking, especially at the secondary level. If we want them to do well on the forward test, maybe we need to consider cutting back on the number of other testing to do. It is time to consider other ideas and options overall. We need to look at other districts who have a population similar to ours.
30 seconds.
Who are of similar size and see what they are doing. What are they doing for curriculum? How are they delivering the curriculum? What model are they using for reading and writing instruction? Are they using grading for learning? Do they use technology the way that we do? We need to look at the big picture and then implement some version of that that works for us. We need to do this methodically with input from teachers, parents and administrators, and we need to give it some time to work. We need to stop looking for quick fixes. Thank you.
And Jen Rath?
Good evening. My name is Jenny Rath. I teach French and world geography at Butler Middle School. I'm here to reiterate the comments I made at the committee meeting last week about the proposal regarding middle school level instructional, excuse me, minutes and the reduction of an elective in the eighth grade level. First of all, I think we're all on the same page about test scores. We've all seen them. We all know that they drop in middle school, much to our dismay, and we all want our kids to do better. However, the plan to take minutes away from electives in order to increase the amount of minutes spent on literacy and math instruction is not a viable or desirable solution. The plan proposed is to decrease the number of electives available to eighth grade students from five semesters to three semesters. The reasoning behind it is that other area school districts offer their students only three semesters of electives in eighth grade and all of their students outperform our students. However, minute allocation is only one factor of the, of many that may affect test performance. In fact, there is no evidence that minute allocation has anything to do with test performance. Correlation does not necessarily equal causation. In fact, our current middle school minute allocation seems to contradict the connection between minutes and test performance. For at least the past seven years since I've been with the district, sixth and seventh grade students spend twice as much time in literacy than in any other class. Wouldn't we expect their test scores to significantly rise near the end of sixth and seventh grade? Instead, the opposite is true. Test scores either maintain or more frequently drop despite the extra minutes devoted to literacy. Clearly, spending more time on a subject is not the answer. What the research does say, however, is that students who learn a world language, participate in music class, and take career and tech ed classes achieve higher academically and are more college and career ready. These fields build background knowledge that help with test scores. Studies have specifically linked world language learning to increase test scores. In fact, a recent study by the University of Massachusetts showed that, and I quote, "children who study a foreign language, even when the second language study takes time away from the study of mathematics, outperform students who do not study a foreign language and have more mathematical instruction during the school day."
30 seconds.
There is so much research on the academic benefits that I couldn't get into at all, so I did leave some documents with that committee last week for you to peruse. But the bottom line is that electives boost achievement, so taking away elective minutes would have the opposite effect when we're looking at ways to augment test performance. So in closing, I do applaud the middle school principals for taking initiative to address our test scores. However, their proposed solution will not address the problem or help our students. And rather than rushing this proposal through, I suggest we give equity of voice to parents, students and teachers, and look at all factors that affect test performance. Thank you.
And Jen, we, we did receive those materials, just so you know.
Thank you.
They were distributed, so. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time that didn't sign up in the beginning? Just state your name and address, please.
Kimberly Cornato. And here's my packet.
And I think we have your address on file, so.
Many of them, sure. Good evening. Today is probably not a significant date to you, however, it is in my household. My husband turned 44 today. We are both products of Waukesha School District and our entire, for our entire academic careers. I flourished, yet my husband did not. You might wonder why our trajectories were so different. October being Dyslexia Awareness Month has something to do with it. The National Institute for Health indicates that nearly all children have the cognitive capacity to learn to read, estimating only 5% of young readers have severe cognitive impairments. 95% of students have the capacity to read, but not every student will learn to read under the same conditions. An estimated 30% of students will learn to read regardless of how they're, they're taught. However, roughly half of students will need high-quality Tier One instruction and foundational skills. An additional 15% of students will require additional time and support to meet their reading potential. This means, in short, one out of five children, 20% of our students in today each classroom are struggling to read, to write, to spell, and to complete basic, basic math. If diagnoses are delayed until a child can no longer compensate on their own in the classroom, the student will often require many years of special education, which I've told you about many times. Without a doubt, they will struggle their whole entire life, just like my husband has, just like my son in seventh grade, Andrew. My challenge to you is to change the way each child's story ends. 20% of our students, in one year, according to the U.S. Department of Education Civil Rights data, 121,000 expulsions, 267,000 restraints and seclusions, 291,100 referrals to law enforcement, and 5.4 million, million, in and out of school suspensions occur in one year. If we change the way their story ends, we can make incredible changes to the root causation of 70% of those in criminal justice system who have a learning disability. We can do that by screening and earlier intervention. We need to work together to support our students with dyslexia as they are three times higher risk of attempting suicide than their peers.
30 seconds.
We need to get to the point of resiliency and mental wellness to end the opiate and homelessness crisis in our state. Let me leave you with these thoughts. Providing a student their needed supports will not guarantee their success, but neglecting to provide their needed supports will guarantee their failure. Allowing students with a hidden disability like ADHD, anxiety, or dyslexia to struggle academically or socially, when all that is needed for success are appropriate accommodations with explicit obstruction, is no different than failing to provide a ramp for a person in a wheelchair.
Time?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, thank you for your comments. As you know, we do not enter into a dialogue. We just listen during that period of time. Moving on to our minutes approval, we do have three sets of minutes to approve. September 11th, we had public hearing on our budget. September 11th, we had the regular full board meeting. And then September 16th, we had. And then September 16th, we had an executive session. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Mrs. Reincheck, is there a second? Taken by Mr. Mojito?
Yes.
And any discussion or changes that we need to, Montijo, I'm sorry. Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Komen.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by Dr. Gray.
No communications this evening.
That's quick.
Yep.
Now, I bet you Diane has a wonderful report on the Waukesha Education Foundation.
I do, thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased to report that GE Healthcare has renewed their $5,000 Platinum Level WEF sponsorship. GE Healthcare is such an outstanding supporter of our schools, providing the resources to make the GE Community Service Days possible and giving the $25,000 as part of their 25th anniversary gift to Whittier for the Classroom of the Future. How many of you saw the feature on CBS 58 Sunday morning? That was just amazing, the way they shared the grand opening that many of us were able to attend. And it was a true tribute to GE and the value of the innovative tools that they're making available for our Whittier students. I can't say thank you enough to GE Healthcare for all that they do as a community partner for the School District of Waukesha. We also received a $1,000 donation from the Waukesha Noon Kiwanis Club. Brian Running and Jean Schumacher are our great ambassadors for us with this group, and I want to publicly thank the Waukesha Noon Kiwanis Club for their support. You should have received a special invitation to WEF's first Evening for Education to be held on November 14th at the Ingleside Hotel. I'm so pleased with our early sales and response to invitations to support this WEF fundraiser with silent auction items, raffle items, sponsorships, and program ads. It's going to be a very special event, and I hope that many of you will consider joining us. My final shout-out is to all of the School District of Waukesha staff who've responded so generously to the call to go casual for a cause. Sue has reported that after just two Dress Comfortably days, $6,390 has been raised. I think that's amazing, and I want to personally thank every one of the staff members who are willing to go casual for our cause. And it also proves that they know that WEF grants work, and they're willing to support us in that respect. So, Mr. President, that completes my report.
Thank you. Always good. Always good to hear what's going on at WEF. Yes, thank you. Moving on to our charter schooling program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Bill. Have a couple items to report on. STEM Randall recently was presented at the CISA One Personalized Learning Convention for STEM Elementary School on October 8th, which was, I believe, yesterday, right? I don't know the results of their presentation, but they, I think the fact that they got to present there is an important growth point. Also relative to STEM, the STEM Governance Board is working diligently on finding some new members for their governance board, as well as other people that are interested in contributing in whatever way they can. So, the STEM Governance Board is really doing a good job with their responsibilities. Should appreciate that. Got a couple inspirational things, I guess, as long as we have a theme going on inspiration today.
Keep it rolling.
Yeah, a couple days ago Cory and I visited the East School, and we were very pleased with what we saw and heard there. There's been significant growth over there. And Tiara, I was getting, the name's mixed up there, Tiara, not Tahari, has made some moves over there, which are moving, which are going in a very positive direction, things that we heard, and Cory would agree, that there's positivity going on over at East High School. And lastly, and this one isn't on your script because it happened this afternoon, so I would like to just report on it. Karen and I took the opportunity to visit the West High School Wall of Fame
Yes.
activity this afternoon, where Michael Hay, a former graduate from West High School.
Pretty impressive.
Presented, and I would like to say, had a chance to actually talk with him a little bit. And what a tremendous job he is doing, and it's an inspiration. And he did present several, he did a presentation program, I should say, with the piano and the kids at West High School. But before he did that, he spoke to them. And he spoke to them in a very positive way about the fact that discipline is important and hard work is important, and it's going to make a difference in your life. And I thought it was a very enjoyable inspirational event that we spent with Michael Hay this afternoon and, and, by the way, and I stole a bunch of the handouts here, so pass these.
And I bet the students were much more receptive to him talking about those two topics as opposed to adults dressing children.
Well, I don't know that, but he really nailed it. He really nailed it, and it was just a very pleasant and I would say inspirational. I see Karen's nodding agreement, so it was a nice time. And we had, I think we got a picture someplace. We'll see. Thank you.
Excellent.
That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we receive any gifts?
Yeah, four gifts tonight. Les Paul Middle School received $1,000 from Paul and Kathleen Olman, and $4,000 in matching gifts from Northwestern Mutual. Both gifts will be used for math, science, and technology integration in the classrooms. Waukesha South High School received $1,025.04 from Chris and Felicia Carrillo for senior banners. Waukesha State Bank donated $15,420 to South High School for new scoreboards and the gyms. And lastly, Milwaukee Tool donated two pallets of tools to each of the following schools, North, South, West, Engineering Academy, Butler, Horning, Les Paul, and Saratoga. The value of this gift is estimated at over $100,000.
Wow. Wow. Wow, thank you for your generosity. It's amazing how this community gives to our, our school district, and we thank you for those, for those gifts. Wow. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for, for approval. We did not have any expulsions to act on tonight. So is there any item that anyone would like to have set aside to, to talk about separately from the consent agenda? Okay, otherwise, Kurt, will you please present the consent agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of one resignation and five new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Taken by Amanda? Any further discussion? Sue, will you take the roll call?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Komen.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Kurt. And moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
Okay, a couple things. I'm going to use it to kind of address some, some issues from tonight. But first of all, I just need to let the board know that there is a hoax going on. This is homecoming week for South. A teacher's email account was hacked, assumed, consumed by a student, and a message went out to students and people all over regarding that the students should dress in a very inappropriate manner. I'm not sure if it's tomorrow Friday, but in any event, that is a hoax. Two TV stations have gotten hold of it, I believe. I just, I've had Terry call tonight. That's kind of a bill of preoccupation here, trying to get them to stand down on that because it isn't, it's, it's not factual, it's a hoax, and it was a, I'll go, it wasn't even a, it was beyond a prank by a student. I'm guessing that once we find out who did it, you'll, we'll be looking at expulsion here because that's a pretty serious matter as, as to what had happened. So if you get word of this from parents or others, just understand that it's, it's not, it's not real, that it is a hoax. Second of all, I appreciate Lindsay coming tonight and, but I, the real thanks goes to the two staffs at Blair and Hawthorne. I, you know, I think from the, from the very start of this, from the very first time we met with the Blair and Hawthorne staff, they treated this, this move with tremendous professionalism and not, not too much emotion unless that was after I left. But in any event, the, the, the staff at Blair and Hawthorne, our new combined school, have just done a wonderful job in accepting this huge change and, and managing what could otherwise have been a pretty, pretty tough process. But, you know, six weeks in, I think we're, we're looking really good. It is a little bit tight in some areas, but we are working on some things to, to take care of that. And it's just, it was very appreciative to hear the comments tonight about our, my team that has, has helped out so well. Two other things. There was a, a comment about forward scores. Actually, our forward scores in general have gone up while the state has gone down, so we are in many areas improving in that regard. And then I love getting compared to similar-sized districts because on our state report card, out of the top 10 to 12 districts, we continually come in, in the top three, usually number two, but usually in the, in the top three. So, in fact, we've actually had some of those districts coming to see what we're doing in our schools. And we have regular tours at some of our, our middle school programs, our academies, STEM. So I think we can be pretty proud of what we do, and, and our comparables to our, to the top districts in the state are very, very good. And I think this year, you saw, if you saw the memo I sent on state report cards that I'm not supposed to talk about, I think we're going to even look even, even better this year. So I just, I'd just like to thank the entire staff for the work they've done in getting us, you know, getting through some tough challenges and getting us to where we're at. So that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports. As you know, we rotate which committee presents first. And first up this, this month is Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on October 7th at six, at 5:30 PM. I have two information items and four discussion items on the agenda this evening. The first information item is an update on the 2019-2020 Budget and Tax Levy. The committee was updated on the current estimates for the 2019-20 Budget and Tax Levy. On October 15th, DPI will certify the district's equalization aid and voucher participation levels, which will enable the business office to calculate the final tax levy and rate. At this time, a rise in the tax rate from last year's $7.80 to a rate right around $8.18 is anticipated. Final 2019-2020 tax rate will incorporate a defecence component based on the criteria mentioned earlier. To finalize the final 2019-20 Budget Levy, a special board meeting will be held on October 28th, 2019, at 5:30 PM. Our second information item was the monthly budget update. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both a general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. The first discussion item is the leasing of district vehicles. The business office has sent out a request for proposal to explore the possibility of leasing some and potentially all maintenance department vehicles. If this is a viable option, we could lease five to seven vehicles in one, in year one that would be within the already allocated budget amount. The proposals are due October 14th, 2019.
This is a discussion item. Questions or comments on that approach? I mean, right now, we purchase our, our virtually every vehicle. I think we have roughly 40-ish, somewhere in that, that amount, and various kinds of vehicles. And so we're, we're looking in, with that $120,000 that we budget in the year, we can maybe buy two to three, is it roughly?
Yeah, two to three, and also what comes out of that pool of money is any large lawn mowing equipment, which some of our larger lawn mowers can be $80,000. So it's hard for us to guarantee that we can turn over at a, at the same rate the vehicles. And we do obviously a lot of plowing, a lot of heavy usage of our vehicles, so it's not a mileage issue, it's years of usage. So we're, we're just looking at this as an option to stabilize the budget and modernize our fleet because we're running at about 10 years old on average for our, kind of our core maintenance fleet.
All right. Anything else? Patrick?
Bernie, moving on. Our next discussion item was the E-Achieve Marketing Plan. E-Achieve presented on their 2020-2021 Marketing Plan, which includes new initiatives and digital opportunities. The new marketing plan will fit within the budget already allocated to the marketing of E-Achieve. Also a discussion item.
Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had some success of growing E-Achieve the last year or two, and I want to make sure I recognize that before I get into this. When I was at Wasby, they were talking, one of the school districts was talking about launching their own, well, it's more of an internal E-Achieve-type program, and somewhat skeptical about whether it was cost-effective for them to do so, but their superintendent was assuring them it was. And I was wondering why, why we don't consider what we do at Montessori.
We, we do. I mean, we offer, I mean, we'll offer any district, I believe, I can't remember what the rate was. It was either 325 or 350 a semester if, if, if other districts want to take our contract in the same manner that we do with Montessori, except we do it with a 6601 agreement, which are governmental. But we, we've, we've had that offer out there for quite a while. But many districts are now, they're now getting into their own system, which they think is cost-effective, but they may or may not find out.
I'm just saying the school board, this school board member is, that school board member is very skeptical of it. And, you know, we've had our own experience, right? With expectations of, of cash flow benefits from, that, you know, we've improved on, and we've worked hard to get to where we're at today. But people don't know about E-Achieve and these other school districts. And so I wonder if we should do more direct marketing on that basis because then they're making the choice to use our resource rather than us trying to go after their kids.
Yeah.
Those kids are enrolling in their district, and then they're contracting them to us.
Very inexpensively as well.
Very inexpensively as well. And most people aren't aware that Waukesha is set up the way we are, that we don't pay outside suppliers, and that we use our own professional teaching staff. So, you know, it's a unique model that I think would be attractive to other school boards if we marketed it to them in the right way, and of course, other superintendents.
Yep.
It'd be nice if staff and board members had something to hand to people and say, hey, you should be checking out what we have in E-Achieve.
We can certainly, we can certainly do that because this is not dependent on, on open enrollment dates. They can contract with us any time for these classes, first semester, second semester, whatever it takes. So I, yeah, if, maybe we need to re-up that particular part of the marketing plan.
Not only that, I mean, we should present that concept at, at Wasby, you know, where all these small school districts show up and are looking for a higher level. I mean, we've had, I know we had E-Achieve, we had some parents that had a child there, and they were saying how much more content they were able to get.
Right.
In Waukesha, in this case, it was versus Watertown. Watertown's not a small, small town, right? But yet, we were offering so much more. And so when we offer so much more and all the stuff that we, because of the way we built E-Achieve, I just think we aren't getting our message out, and we should be using the same type of concept that we use with Montessori, which.
I don't think we've, I don't know of any effort where we've tried to directly market other than just to the surrounding.
It was a few years ago, we had, and I don't know if maybe it wasn't panning out, but I know we did have other districts who would contract with us. Again, it was a very reasonable fee, and maybe that's still happening, but it's not being reported much. But obviously, we need to get a better, a better message out there to districts.
That's a big, that's a big target.
And I might even say, we can use Montessori as our example. Even though it's not, I mean, that's an example of where we contract out to somebody else.
Right.
So that we can maintain that enrollment number in our district. And really, that is, that's the, the model that we're encouraging these districts to pursue.
Yeah.
I think our enrollment would be much better. They'd quit choosing other, other systems that the school districts aren't benefiting from at all. They just quit going to Appleton or wherever they're going. And it would be a very competitive model that we'd be putting forth.
I believe we can also offer that to the voucher schools, too.
Yes, across the board. And because obviously, they're taking their kids, and they're getting that fee, and then they can contract back to us.
Right.
So there's, there's many, many ways that this. So, there's many, many ways at this, to address this, that we just don't seem to be quite that aggressive on. And I truly think we need someone who's accountable for coming up with these plans and implementing these plans rather than just talking about them, so.
Mrs. White?
One of the things that we found out at the meeting, when they presented to us, was that back in 2004, when we started, there were seven, you know, virtual schools in the state of Wisconsin. In 2009, it was up to 12, when we launched the middle school. And the elementary launch in 2014, there were up to 30 schools across the state of Wisconsin. 2019 is up to 48. You know, so that's 48 schools that, you know, we could be contacting and saying, instead of trying to set up your own, which is not an easy thing to do, you know, we could maybe help them to, you know, have an alternative to that process.
Well, another 380 that we could also go to. Don't have it, who would like to get the courses in, and including some of the area private schools as well. So, and some of those 48s are, I think, are only servicing their own district. I think some of those are pretty much closed to their own district. But, yeah, it is, it is growth. People think it's a moneymaker. It's not. I was actually one of the founders of the very first one in Appleton, and it was years before we saw an extra dime out of that because of the startup costs. And I think that was the same here in Waukesha as well.
Other comments or questions? Anybody? Kurt?
Well, I just, you know, with the regional meetings coming up here at the end of the month, right, for our region, it'd be nice to have material for that. Plus, I have the Wasby Resolutions Committee, where I met the board member that was going over this. She was very skeptical that the superintendent was going to make money on this program, and I told her she had a right to be skeptical based on our experience. And it's just that we need to be more creative about, and I'm not criticizing, we have made great progress, okay? But, we can make, I think there's a lot more we can do.
Our PR communications director's here tonight, so I have a feeling we'll have a draft of something sometime tomorrow.
We still obviously have to market to all the students to enroll throughout the state, but that's a great, great idea to revisit, Kurt. Yeah.
And by the way, I do want to also acknowledge the fantastic work our PR person does and all this. I mean, we get great, great media coverage for a lot of stuff we do in the district that I love spreading and showing to other people. So, it's wonderful to have that, so.
Any other discussion on marketing of E-Achieve?
Great. Next up on the discussion items is referendum project planning. Darren Clark, along with Bray Architects and Fendorf Construction, presented the plan for summer's 2020 and 2021 renovation plans at Horning, Butler, Les Paul, and South. Design and layout plans were shown and logistics were discussed. This item was agendized on the board agenda as a discussion to seek board input.
I'm going to provide a little background.
Yeah, you can provide whatever you desire.
On Monday, as Patrick just mentioned, Fendorf went through, we, Bray was there to go through kind of the design phase, but Fendorf was really there to talk about the construction schedule and trying to accomplish all this in time for the 21-22 school year, which sounds like a long ways away. And part of the logistics of it, really, Butler's the biggest challenge we have, just the way the building's laying out, redoing the HVAC system and maintaining air exchange rates and all the things we have to, the building just doesn't go over as well. And I should, I guess I should start, you have a packet with the PowerPoint and the proposed construction schedule. It's a very high level, but we are going to be doing construction during the school year, and Fendorf's very experienced in doing that. One of the concepts that we're looking at at Butler, because again, Butler, we just, there's not many options in terms of easily renovating that building, is to have the sixth graders next year, who would go to Butler, we would actually set up Blair Elementary School to be a middle school for one year to free up space within the building to allow us to get this work done over a two-summer in a school year, a 15-month period of time. That's easy for administration to sit in a room, and we've met with staff, we've met with Jason, and gone through, we think it's possible. But, we really are to the point where do we put much more energy into that plan if the board's just not going to be accepting of that plan? Again, we think it can work. Blair's within a half-mile or so of Butler Middle School. But, there's also some other questions that we asked FNF, is some of the projects we would start in December with removing ceilings in the hallway. Over Christmas break, we would remove asbestos in the hallways and in the common areas because come summer, when the guys come in, they need access to those spaces. So, you either lose two or three weeks for that removal in summer, or you knock it out. You know, are you fine with no ceilings and no flooring during the school year to preface and allow us to maximize the summer construction, 12 to 14 weeks that we get? So, some big topics, if you, I'm not sure how the recording of FNF went, but if you do have time, we did some virtual tours of the sites. I have them here if you want to see them, but there's a lot of them, and anyone on FNF knows it was a long meeting. So, those were kind of the big concepts that we're looking for. Some feedback, do we have all the answers to the Blair option? No. Greg was asking me some really good questions instructionally before the meeting started. We've started working on those. We think we can get the science class. He asked me about tech ed. We haven't gotten there, but we can come back next month with a full plan, inlay it all out. So, we're really just here to hear your comments, gather any questions you might have, answer the ones we can, and then more than likely, bring back the questions we can't answer tonight.
Questions, comments? Bill?
One quick one, and maybe it's obvious. Montessori will be out of there by then?
Yeah, Montessori's lease ends in June. And the reason they would like to lease, I think, I don't want to speak for them, longer, but we knew, we were knocking this around administratively, that we might need to pursue this option. I should also add that if we, if we don't pursue Blair, and we want to maintain, and we don't want to have a three-summer project at Butler, we would be looking at multiple portable or temporary classrooms, which you have to run power to, you have to run, you have security, you have heating, you have cooling, and it's quite costly to do those temporary classrooms. So, that's an important point, but...
Temporary classrooms are never temporary. And then, and they become...
I read one of them.
I know, I'm saying, they're never temporary.
And we went to move it, it was very temporary.
And it becomes an eyesore in pretty quick fashion, so, yeah.
Corey?
I guess, not addressing the financial side and the logistical side, and I think I'm stating stuff we all know, but I want to make it clear. When students are progressing through middle, through grade school, they're told what school they're going to go to for middle school. Things they look forward to for many years, they often have over older siblings or friends that are going to Butler or going to the other schools, to somehow take that away for a year and have them go to a school they're not anticipating. I think it would be something I would suggest we try to avoid unless it's a last resort option, or I guess, an option of last resort. I'd hate to have, I think there'd be a lot of disappointment if they're going to a school they didn't anticipate going to. Nothing about, the school community has built up over a number of years, especially Butler, which I have a student at now, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grader, they're big grades. So, I would have to be really...
Mr. Bryant?
So, just to get a little flavor on this, you're talking about sixth grade as a Butler problem, right? You move the sixth grade to Blair?
Yeah, one, one class only.
One class for one year. One class of sixth, for one year. I'm inclined to say if it's, if it's the most economically viable and most practical way to go about it, then I think it's worth consideration and should receive heavy consideration.
The temporary classrooms, and again, we don't have specific numbers, the cost could run from a half a million up to close to a million dollars by the time you run all the utilities and safety procedures, handicap, accessibility, all those things. But, we confirm, confirm that up.
Kurt?
I think it'd be a different story if you're talking about seventh or eighth, but, you know, sixth grade, you're talking about a transition period anyway. And, you know, it's, we've gone through this stuff before in the history of this district. I mean, I think, not here tonight, but I know we have a couple alumni from north that, they had to spend time at Harvey Phillips as part of their transition because of things. And he said Harvey Phillips was a real dive then, too, you know? But, that's just the way life is. And we are fortunate to have wonderful facilities in this district, but we have wonderful facilities because we're always trying to stay on top of things.
Amanda?
Yes, thank you. Just another point for everyone to consider, I had a conversation with Mr. Sodowsky this afternoon, as to why sixth grade, and maybe not eighth grade, when the children are more established in the middle school. And the answer that I was given was that the seventh and eighth graders share electives, and so, those things, those classrooms and stuff are already there at Butler, and that makes, it makes most sense academically to keep those two grades in the same building. So, because I didn't understand at the point why, why they were looking at sixth grade.
Diane?
I see it as an opportunity for the sixth graders to know that the improvements, they're going to be able to live those improvements in seventh and eighth grade. So, they're out for a year, it's like remodeling your house. You go through a little bit of inconvenience, you're going to have the payback of being in this better facility for the last two years of their, of their middle school experience. So, I think that there's, you know, a value for them to give that, you know, make that accommodation.
Bill?
I would support what Diane just said. I had the same feeling that, I know it's a little bit difficult for a kid to make that little transition, another transition, but in this case, it's another case where you could spin it positively. You're going to get into a school that's been fixed up, or whatever you want to call it. And if they know enough about it in advance, you know, we just, we just went through this, all these concerns we had at Hawthorne, Blair, and moving into Hawthorne and the other places, handled in a positive way, the kids are fine with it. And, you know, I know that there's a little bit of an apprehension, but when I, when we moved here, my, two of my kids were in two different buildings. In temporary facility.
And bust.
And at Harvey Phillips, by the way, that's where they had second grade in those days. And, you know, for them, one or two years like that, and they were going to go, and both of them going to a new school. You just got to spin it a little bit. Given, we already own the building, it's there, it's going to be available for our use, and unless somebody comes along and wants to buy it for a lot of money between now and then, I would support doing this. I mean, that's my early response to the question. I might change it, but I don't think so.
Kurt?
And I'd only want to add, you know, when you take into consideration the other changes that we put children through, like closing schools, like the Blair situation, or before that, Randall, Saratoga, Pleasant Hill, a transition for a small group of children to remodel a school, I don't see...
A one-year thing.
A one-year thing. I just don't see it being compared to what we've done to others in order to try and drive, you know, just, it's just what we've had to do, right? We've had to do that. In addition, I remember, you know, when we've had to move children around between Rose Glen and Bethesda to try and balance enrollments because it was so crowded and all that grandfathering and all that, this is a minor thing, really, compared to all the other stuff we've done over the years in this district.
One of the other points that we were looking at is, as you have Butler being under construction, safety is one of our primary concerns. And completely moving a grade over off the premise actually helps us to get, we have more space to work. We don't have to be quite as concerned with fewer students because we have, we have places where we can spread things out. Having them all in one location, we know Blair is, is a good, good, safe area, there will be no construction going on. So, we've literally removed one-third of all the students that have to deal with all the construction aspects. Now, I'm highly confident in Fendorf, they've done this many times, you know, the committee, I think, was not really that concerned about open ceilings and floors and things like that. But, you still need to keep the students away from certain things, and that's what we were more concerned of. And Blair actually helps accomplish that, at least for a third of the population. The other thing that I think I've found over the years is, I think, changes like this is actually more difficult for the parents than it is for the students. The students seem to adapt a little bit better than, than the parents, but, you know, that's, that's neither here nor there. I mean, we need to think about our students first, I think, in this case, so. Other questions, comments? Greg?
Darren, would the timeframe be to come back with some recommendations and a more finalized plan next month?
Ideally, and I'd also have Jason be part of that, so we can, we'll coordinate with the TNL department, too, about what needs to be moved and all that. But, we could come back with a much more, better informed, not only on the logistics, but we'll know more about our project in a month as well, because that's a living document, too. But, we definitely want to get, so everyone's on the same page of exactly how this will work and the timing. We also, speaking of our PR department, would have to start a information campaign to parents because they have to be informed of what's going on and why. But, we, I would like to think that next month, we could come back with a finished product or a very near-finished product. And I would ask any board member, I mean, it's kind of a big topic and something you don't think about, right? If you have questions during the month, send them to us so we can answer them proactively so when we come back to present, we can, we can cover those.
One other thought on temporary classrooms, the referendum, a large part of the referendum was security. Three to four classrooms outside away from the school is a security problem. So, that was also brought up at the committee.
Outside on the grounds.
Yeah, outside on the grounds.
On the Butler grounds.
Outside of the building.
Yeah.
Four, three to four separate classrooms is trouble for our security plan.
Yeah, transitioning, talking about the transition from inside to outside and, so...
And the snow, you know, they're going to be doing this during the winter.
Yeah, snow, lock them down. I mean, concerned about the school being a target, standalone classroom would be an optimal target. All righty.
I would say I would agree with that, Mr. McCaffrey. The one concern I would have is, I don't think we've done anything with Blair with, like, the secure entrance or anything like that, so that would need to be looked at.
Yeah, that was discussed. There were a couple thoughts of moving the office more forward and maybe with some personnel changes we're talking about.
We'd have fewer kids there, you'd have more flexibility.
We also talked about splitting of the leadership, you know, so having the principal will primarily stay, Jason will primarily stay at Butler, but Jeff Taggy will become essentially the principal of Blair and be the primary administrator on those grounds.
If only one class would be able to move around where it doesn't, not a big cost to move that office up front. I mean, we wouldn't build a new office, it would just be moved up.
So, Darren, yeah?
I was just going to say, just talking about the FNF meeting in general, the PowerPoint presentation, which, you have a hard copy, really doesn't do the presentation justice. I'll, it's a big file, though, I'll try emailing it out to you so you can do the tours. Now, what was that?
Can you share it on the docs?
Yes, I can try to, I'm still trying to learn docs, but I'm getting there. Yeah, we'll get it out there so you can see it, because the virtual tours really give you an idea of what we're talking about.
Is it on YouTube already, though?
I would assume, I just don't know what it looks like.
Looks good.
Does it? Okay.
So, we could just send that.
Yeah.
Send that link, and then we don't have to worry about uploading it.
I think he misses us.
Not that much.
He misses us.
Okay. Pat?
All righty.
You have one more discussion item?
Our last discussion item is the referendum financing plan. Michelle Wyberg from PMA Financial was present to help answer questions in regards to defeasing, which means levying more than what is outlined in the debt repayment schedule in the early years of the payback cycle. This allows for prepayment of debt and will ultimately save taxpayers significant interest costs. The committee asks for a defeasance plan to be finalized once the certified equalization aid amount is shared on October 15th. The parameters of this plan should take into consideration the following. School district of Waukesha remains at the low end of tax rates when compared to other K-12 districts in the area, that there is interest cost savings to be realized, and that the planned 10-year debt amortization schedule is reduced. Also a discussion item, so if there's any questions about the defeasance.
Yeah, the numbers, Kurt?
This is consistent with our, you know, our overall objective is to, you know, reduce the cost of borrowing as much as possible. And I think, given the fact we have a strong economy with, with good employment, and we're still at a tax levy that's lower than most, it's a good idea to do what we can to lower the overall net borrowing costs. Let's say four or five years from now, we might not have a strong economy, and people would like to have a lot lower taxes when the economy's weaker. So, well, people want to have lower taxes all the time, but, you know, but it's nice to be debt-free, and we like being debt-free as a district.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's been a number of things as we look at the levy. If, if we were playing out what we presented to the public, our tax levy would have been for this next year at $8.52?
The preliminary budget was 8.51, I believe.
8.51? Okay. And we're projecting eight, 18?
Eight, 18.
Roughly, with starting to move towards paying things off sooner than later, and the projections in your packet. And we'd have to decide this every year if we wanted to add on to the tax levy to pay things down sooner. But the numbers in your, in your packet reflect an eight-year payback in total on our referendum. And most schools are looking at 15 to 20 years on a referendum. So I, I think this is really good news for our constituents. And the numbers might be vague because you're not, you know, in the TV audience, you're not looking at this stuff all the time, but we can knock two years off of 10, 10 years, and that's a pretty significant saving, so. Even being more aggressive than what we originally thought. So, Kurt?
But let's be clear, tax levy is not tax bill. And when, 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 when we see our tax bills in December, as individual taxpayers, we'll see the impact of, of what we decide to do here tonight. Tax levy is not tax bill. So I don't want anyone to think that, you know, your taxes aren't going to be going up if we make a decision to try and pay off debt early. It would, your tax bill would be lower if we didn't make the decision to pay off debt earlier. But you'd be paying those higher taxes for a much longer period of time, and you'd be paying more money overall for a much longer period of time. So that's the trade-off. So whenever people talk about the bill going up, yes, it went up, but the overall concept is to save money and reduce your bill over the long term.
And we're saving it on interest, really, is what we're saving on, so.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Pat?
Our next meeting is on November 11th at 5:30 PM, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Deeds.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee was held on October 1st, 2019 at 6:00 PM. There is one action item, two information items, and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The one action item pertained to the approval of the Academic and Career Plan, and also the Education for Employment Plan. Molly Habenschild and Amanda Wagner were at the meeting to provide updates as they relate to both district plans. Data points were also shared regarding education for employment indicators. On a four to zero vote, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the Academic Career Plan and the Education for, for Employment Plan as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
Can I just say, I'd, I'd also like to thank Waukesha County Business Alliance has been a fantastic partner in both of these two areas. I mean, we have two wonderful staff members in, in, in Amanda that are managing this, but the Business Alliance has just been fantastic in terms of supporting and providing resources for these programs.
Questions, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Mathieu?
Aye.
Karen Reinichek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. We'll move forward with the new plan. Greg?
Moving on to our first information item, Middle School Instructional Minutes. The three middle schools, Butler, Horning, and Les Paul, currently have fewer instructional minutes as compared to other schools in the area, including our charter middle school, Saratoga-Stem. Reflecting on our board goals and the current scheduling model, adding additional instructional minutes is one way to provide more instructional time for students, as well as build consistency across our middle school grade levels. We anticipate requesting approval to increase the overall instructional minutes at the middle level at the December meeting. Second informational item dealt with Baking for Culinary, a WCTC-transcripted course. Information on a new course proposal for Family and Consumer Science at the high school level. Baking for Culinary was presented. This course would be in the Culinary Arts Pathway, following Culinary Arts or Chef Foods. It is anticipated that approval to add this course will be requested at our December meeting. We had one discussion item, and that dealt with Math Vision 2020. After two years of looking at our high school math outcomes and course, and course pathways, with a group of high school math teachers, a recommendation was made to develop an integrated math vision. This new vision, Math Vision 2020, looks to realign the mathematics course sequence into an integrated math model, which brings Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II together into multiple courses based on standards instead of the three separate courses based on content. Dan Keizer and Dan Paczinski were at the meeting along with teachers AJ Rabel from South High School and Nancy Singer from North High School to talk about their work on aligning the standards, developing supports for students with IEPs, helping English language learners, as well as students who struggle with needed acceleration. The curricular design process they are using was reviewed with us that evening, along with an update on the math model, as well as their flexible timeline for next steps. And this is a discussion item.
Any questions or comments? Bill?
Just comments or two. When I first saw this, I did have some questions about how it would fit with, particularly, my question was how it would fit with colleges and universities and their ability to understand what we're doing. And turns out, they're, they're waiting for it. I mean, they, they don't have an issue with it. They're, it would fit in very nicely with what universities want in terms of kids applying. So that one went away, and, and the rest of it just made sense. I mean, it just fits nicer than the unbelievably complicated method we have today. So I feel good about it.
Yeah, I was not able to attend the meeting, and I wonder if we had any, and I didn't get a chance to watch it between last week and this week. Did we make any advance on talking about properly, if we move forward with this, properly training our staff and having enough time to do the professional development? And, because we have had some, taken on some areas of math in the past where we've fallen short on some of those things. So, Jody, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
That we've really been proud of our teacher voice along the way, especially with this math team. And so they're driving, they're driving this, meaning if they're not ready, then we don't launch. So we're trying to make sure that they feel prepared on the front end. There's a pretty big team of about 12 teachers that have been working over two years on this. And so we feel good about progress, but again, won't, won't compromise a rush for students or for teacher preparation.
And we think we can fit that within our budget? And this will, from the training perspective and-
Yes.
-the professional development over the summer and, because I know that was a concern that we had also raised, I think, at the previous meeting. So, other questions or comments? Yes, Kurt?
I'd just like to state that one of the things that this program was driven from the educators up, right? A very active involvement of the educators saying that, you know, being proactive in how we can offer a more modern approach to our math and science curriculum. And I think that's the way we should be doing things in our district, asking people in the trenches, you know, how we can do better. And when we talked about an earlier subject tonight, which I won't go back to because it's not a discussion item, but I will say, we do encourage administration, rather than asking us to just accept something from an administrative team, to make sure that we've explored what our staff says as an alternative or ideas that may be better for us to take a look at as well. And this is a good example of that, the math program, where we had the staff come to us. And in the past, one of the things that we had the staff come to us and push for was the change in the North High School schedule way back when, which ended up being something that we implemented sort of across the district. So when we listen to our staff, the people in the trenches, like we have in this case, we usually have good things come out of it.
Other questions, comments? Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 5th, here in the boardroom at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to safety and security, given by Mrs. Reinichek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report this evening, although we will be meeting Monday, October 21st at 6:00 PM, if anyone would like to join us.
Hope you have a big crowd. Thank you. Moving on to human resources and compensation, given by Mr. O'Brien?
I have no report tonight. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee is up next. Mr. Baumgart?
I have some work to do.
A little bit.
Well, really-
Long.
It really won't be that, I hope it isn't that, that bad, in all honesty. What we'll be looking at tonight is a dozen or so policies revisions, which put us in a second category we have. So basically, we'll be going through a brief reading, we've been talking about before, and was approved at the Policy Committee September 17th, and will be able to seek approval this evening. I will be going through the policies as a group, the whole group, and then ask for an approval at the end. If you have one of these that you want to be separated, at the end, I'll ask for that opportunity for separate, because many of them are pretty straightforward. So, let it begin. First policy we're dealing with, I have too many papers in front of me. First policy we're dealing with is actually two policies. Policy 2411, School Counseling and Academic Career Planning, and Policy 2260.02, English Language Proficiency. Quite simply, all we did, or they did, by the way, this is mostly done under Neola's direction, is move a section from Policy 2411 to the English Language Proficiency Policy 2260.02, and you'll see it read in red on, on the one and reappearing on the other one. Any questions on that one? Seeing none. Policy 5340, Student Accidents, Illness, Concussion. The primary focus of this policy is to add some language regarding concussions, so that we, the kids, the parents are well aware of our concern about concussions. Our coaches and staff have been trained in identifying and dealing with a concussion if they see one happening in the event of a, of a event. There's, there's nothing here, I guess, that we aren't already aware of. But you'll see some text has been added to the point about getting parents' approval, et cetera, et cetera. Questions? 5340, okay. 5460, Graduation Requirements. You see an awful lot of red and green on this one. For the most part, they are moving things around on these pages, from one place to another place. There are a couple changes for us. In the executive review up in the beginning, you'll see there was language installed by, by Neola and some that we wanted installed. The important one that we want installed deals with the school board shall award a pupil up to one sentence, one, one science credit for successfully completing a high school grades. That's mis- In a high school grades, a career or technical education course that the school board will determine satisfies a science requirement, but may not award any credit for that course if the school board awards any credit for that course under another subdivision. Does that make any sense? Good. It is a little bit complicated, but it, quite simply, if we need another credit in science and they can get it out of a tech ed course or something like that, there's a way for us to do that. It's not a big change. In fact, I don't think it's a change at all, is it, Jody? No. But it's worded now. Inside, you'll also see the, the, the standards and 25 credits required. The civics test is stated in here. This is the most complicated of the ones we're going to be looking at. FIAD program that you can get if you are participating, currently participating in one of the sports activities, you can take FIAD, and you can skip the FIAD and take something else in it, in its case. I missed something back here, I'm sorry. The credits for chemistry, biology, and physics, the credits are listed on page two. Just so you know, that the TNL department is also looking deeper into the science programs and exactly how we're going to be dealing with it. But for the time being, this is essentially the way we will be dealing with At the bottom of page two, the board may approve a course or courses in, in career and technical education that it determines may satisfy up to a total of one credit in mathematics or science credit. I guess that's the kind of what I was talking about before. Again, many things are just being shifted from one place to another. Oh, there is, there's a statement on the graduation, we're dealing with disciplinary situation. If you, if the kid has to be, realize that we can limit their participation in the celebration or the diploma handing out, the stage, we can if we have a disciplinary reason. It's just so, it's, we are stated as saying that. Again, something we're used to doing. So any other questions on this particular policy? This is the medias one we're looking at, but again, it's not a whole lot of new stuff. Oh, there's some, actually, alternative education statement in there. It's very much in the area of what we're doing with Tierra, East High School.
Competency Program.
Pardon? Competency Program.
Is that new?
No.
That's just-
No.
Okay. No, I mean, is that new phraseology? Added phraseology?
We've always referred to it as alternative education, but the competency, the, the alternate education, which you see in policy, goes beyond what we would talk about within the scope of a competency diploma. It may be a completer certificate for a student, for instance, who went through the Transition Academy. It could be a, a regular high school diploma, whatever it might be. But by saying alternative education, you could be addressing a much broader range of student than just somebody who completed a competency diploma.
Okay, gotcha. Kurt?
When I look through this, I'm just asking a question, I'm not, okay. From my perspective, there's, there's, the competency diploma language that was in there was always like less restrictive language rather than more restrictive language. So the language that was in there was very less restrictive. The language that's been added seems to be trying to add more depth and content to it, which is almost like too many words. I mean, it can do it, it's no big deal, but I thought the original language is pretty simple. The superintendent has the right to create an alternative program to suit the needs of the district. I'm okay if they change the language, I'm just saying, it just looks like more words to say the same thing.
Could be. Okay. Anything else on graduation requirements? Student complaints, quite simply, it identifies in here, again, we've always accepted student complaints. Multiple policies, here's what the important thing is here, we listed some examples of things that could be considered. Joel?
We wanted to outline specific policies in here that had a formal process- We wanted to outline specific policies in here that had a formal process of investigation, such as bullying, 504 discrimination, nondiscrimination, and equal access. All of those things have a prescribed investigation process through the Office of Civil Rights. So if a family comes to us, if a student comes to us with a complaint, they can now more easily access what perhaps the complaint is based off of, and our administration then can look at this policy and then go to the appropriate policy for investigation.
And it actually lists them. That's the point. We have a couple on dealing with the cash that comes in, payment of invoices. This policy has been revised to more accurately address the process of paying invoices and to account for more accurately for the use of electronic means of paying them. It's very simply stated that, you know, the words... Few words have been added. Payment may be issued, a check, voucher, or record of electronic payment publicly submitted properly. Payroll Authorization. The paragraph on the cover is essentially not necessary. It's just simply stating our obligation to pay. That's it.
Yeah.
Okay? We don't need that whole... The whole issue about collective bargaining and all that was removed previously, so one sentence. Student Activity Fund. This isn't... You know, we've been through this before, but our need to make sure that money doesn't sit around in a cash drawer someplace and get lost in the process. Board authorized maintenance of approved student activity funds is allowed by DPI regulations and auditor's recommendations. We know that. Collected money shall be handled, secured, and deposited in accordance with Policy 6630, which deals with getting it in and out, not sitting in a drawer someplace. Okay?
Darren likes that one.
Like that, Darren?
Yeah. Maybe we do now, but it's just...
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Well, a number of years back, it wasn't being handled so well. Let's just put it that way.
Yes.
It tends to be a topic that...
Yes, okay. Okay. Policy 6830, Audit. Make sure I'm seeing in the system properly. Again, not a surprise to us. It is not a requirement that the board approve the audit. It is merely presented to us through the FNF. Audit goes to the FNF Committee, it's presented, and then it comes to the board, not for approval, but to understand it, if we can. Okay? And the auditor's report, it's identified as what must be included in the auditor's report. Again, we already act on that the same way. Next one is another one where two of them are linked together. 7300 Disposition of Real Estate Property and 7310 Disposition of Personal Property. And again, there's a lengthy description on the first page, which you can essentially ignore, because it goes through all kinds about public board meetings and so on. We know that. Quite simply, they are defining the two types of properties on two different policies. And it's pretty clear to us. Okay?
Questions?
Policy 7434, Use of Tobacco, Nicotine, and Related Products on School Premises. This is defined. We follow these rules already. If I notice near the bottom, they specifically have added the term outdoor facility, and I think we had this before, but vaporizers and electronic cigarettes are now included in this. Questions on that?
Questions, comments?
And there is a similar one, 7540 for... Whoops. Yep, 7540.01, Technology Privacy. Some things have been deleted for clarification, but the important thing, board-owned technology resources may also be referred to as district technology resources, and includes all those technology resources purchased by or authorized by the acquisition or usage by Board of District's activities. I don't know if there's anything new on this one, Joel. Lot of stuff that Hope Steve understands.
Okay.
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 Okay. And then, nice, thick packet, 10 policies, all in one. There is a requirement that the compliance officer in our district be named in the policies, and therefore we... Therefore, yes.
Not just by title?
Not by title, by personal. So there are 10 policies in here, which have taken Christine Hedstrom's name out of the policy and added Sharon's name into the policy. And that's the sum and substance of this...
And that's a state statute that we have to follow to...
It's a federal requirement to have the name of the compliance officers listed. Have one male and one female compliance officer, so that somebody who's making the complaint...
And you're the other one?
I am the other one.
You're the male side, yeah. So that's the list of policies for new revision. Does anybody want any one of them set aside for separate voting? Not seeing none, then I will now move for approval of all of... Oh, Diane?
I so moved.
Oh. I just moved.
I second it then.
Okay, thank you.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Diane. Okay. Any questions? Questions or further discussion on the policy revisions?
And Sue, you have the numbers of all these policies.
I won't summarize that one. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Mantillo.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
William Baumgard.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue.
Thank you. I do have one new policy, which I will present to you this evening for approval in November. Cash Handling and Deposits is a new policy written in it. It provides to govern the handling of cash received in the course of various district operations. Specifically, the policy requires secure storage and retention of sufficient documentation to audit and verify the proper handling of such funds. You have it in front of you for your first reading, and we will be reviewing this at the committee meeting next week and bringing it forward. And that does include the...
Does anyone have comments? Yeah. Kurt?
You know, Mr. Baumgard, I'm sorry, I didn't watch the last Policy Committee meeting.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm hurt.
Bless that, you're hurt, yeah. In our packet was Policy 0155, which is on the agenda for the Policy Committee meeting. Did that get set aside for the time being?
We pulled that off for further revisions that we're going to be talking about.
Okay. Don't need to talk about it tonight, it's not in the agenda.
No, it's not on here for talk.
Good, thanks.
Any other discussion on the new policy that will be presented at next month's policy meeting? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our Technology Committee report, given by Ms. Voight.
We did not meet, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our other business. Are there any recommendations for future Board of Education meeting items to be agendized? Or suggestions to committee chairs for committee items? Yeah, Kurt?
At Wasbe, there was a discussion, I think they're going to take it up as one of the resolutions. But it has to do with reporting requirements relative to assault and stuff like that. And they had indicated that the policy in the past was that every five years, it was a state mandated policy that you'd have a review of the policies with people in your district. Well, it kind of correlated to getting your license. Well, they don't do the license thing anymore, I guess, so it's not as common. So they were going to suggest that it be reviewed every year because of the nature of the importance of it and the liability for staff. So I think that's something that maybe we should look at at the policy level, given that it's an important topic that we have all staff understand what their obligations are under the law for things like reports of abuse and such as that, considering, you know, some of our own recent past history. So maybe that's something we should be reviewing in policy, that that's an annual thing that administration has to cover.
It is built into our annual...
Should be in our policy. Well, I want it defined on how we cover that as a district from policy, so that we know as a board that that's covered in the way we'd like it to be covered every year. I think it's very important. It's an important... I mean, it's a risk for our staff, it's a risk for the district, and it's something that can easily fall through the tracks, because the law's somewhat complex, and we just need to make sure that we're doing our part to properly train our staff.
Any other suggestions for agendized items, committee or full board? Okay, we do have a need for a closed session tonight. Item B we need. Item...
No.
Item B we will need, although there wasn't a specific expulsion, there is an issue that has arisen that we need to go into closed session for on expulsions. Well, actually, there is a... We need to go in closed session to talk about expulsions. Yep. And we do have a need for item D, but we... And we do need item C. Yeah, why don't we do B, C, and D for closed session? So I'd be looking for a motion on... Bill?
Yeah. I will move for adjourning to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851F and 19.851E and 19.851C.
We do need to do each of the descriptions.
Do we have to read them all out?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will do them one at a time. 19.1F and 120.131C to review actions of the expulsion panel. And do you have to vote on them all separate? Okay. And to adjourning to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851E for deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining issues could be... Would be required to close this... Is required to have a closed session. And D, adjourning to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to discuss 2019-2020 salary percentage increases for the executive administrators. And I so move.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Cory?
Do you have to read it all?
No.
Checking.
Sue, please take the roll call.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgard.
Aye.
Cory Mantillo.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. We will be heading into closed session now, and we will be reconvening into open session afterwards, but we're not sure how long the closed session is going to take. I don't know, half hour, 45 minutes, more than, I guess, hour, maybe an hour and a half. I don't know. We really don't know. So thank you for being with us tonight.